All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Committee of the whole at 8:10. Okay, I'm not going to do the roll call again because we're not voting on anything. Okay. Procedures for public participation, same as they were at 7:30. We have some edits to the policy. Oh, they've been updated with corrections on the website. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel and potential We're doing something a little different. We're going to try this. So we're going to go ahead and have our student board representatives do their reports now. You don't want it?
Do we do public comment after this?
Oh, I skipped over announcements. Give me a second. I apologize, I didn't mean to skip over public comment. Does anybody have any public comment on anything that we are going to discuss today? Now just remember that this is a committee of the whole, so there will be an opportunity to comment after each section in the agenda if you would like as well. So does anybody want to come and talk right now?
I'm going to get it out. Do I have to sign again?
No.
Okay.
You're good.
So, Brenton Markle, Paul Street, Birdsboro. Like I said earlier, we've been coming for months. We've been presenting facts that we would like our mask exemption form updated and changed. We would like the form to be like Twin Valley's. We want the form to be signed by the parents with no medical information needed and no sign off by a doctor. Like I said, we've presented facts for the reason of this, and by you updating the form and putting it into the parents' hands and out of your out of your hands and it's onto ours, that it is our choice, that we want our children to be able to come to school without a mask. And I do have a copy of Twin Valley's form.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to comment right now? We were going to talk about it at the end during Under Old Business, so we'll have a chance to talk about it then. Okay. Anyone else? No? Yes? Okay. Now, again, sorry, there will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel and potential litigation. We are trying something new, and we're going to have the student reps give their presentations at the beginning of the meeting, and we appreciate them coming and having patience through the first scintillating 40 minutes. So, thank you, guys. Stay away.
Starting with the primary center, academic students are being introduced to coding in their computer specials. Starting in our school, there was a program later this year, and the first cultural this month's Fall's Award was a turkey trot dance party, and Fall's Day for peaceful awareness.
For the intermediate center, Matt Lemon, who already used iHana's secretaries worked on their promotional book videos in library class using iMovie. Extracurriculars, classroom exercise behavioral obedience in the cafeteria. Behavior is tracked through a sticker chart and a subsequent incentive prize is given in accordance to the first page class. For the middle school, the eighth graders are starting to look at the different high school courses to take next year. Also, all English classes are doing book reports. Extracurricularly, the first student council meeting is coming up. The courts and band concerts are happening, and they're hosting a donation drive for the loser.
Finishing up. And finishing up with high school. For academics, students testing for ways since last week. Extracurricular, the one at formal was Saturday, December 4th, and most sports are beginning practices and skirmishes. Cultural, the high school, it is looking to form an inter- inter-club council to improve communication between the clubs, and to work together on different projects. That concludes our report.
Thank you. I just spoke to Dr. Cooper. We will get you a second mic for the next time. I apologize, making it a little easier for you. And moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Update on our COVID-19 reported cases and identified close contacts continue to remain flat since I last reported at our voting meeting on the 22nd of November. If you remember, I reported that the cases had started to come back down after we had the outbreak that we had in particular at the high school. So we've been remaining flat for the past couple of weeks. Based on the board action related to our district rightsizing plan at our last November 22nd voting meeting, we are administratively, we're in the process of preparing requisite correspondence to the Pennsylvania Department of Ed indicating this organizational change for our district. So the resolution, a letter from the district, signed by myself, excuse me, and a copy of the minutes or the board approving the minutes from that meeting all have to be included. So we're waiting on that to take place, and we will send that off to the department. Finally, the, having had the opportunity to attend fall athletic contests this past fall and looking forward to our indoor winter sports, it was great to attend the middle school holiday concert last week, and it was nice to see our students perform in person after not having had the opportunity to do so last holiday season and stemming back from the spring of the previous year. So I look forward to the continued holiday events being held in all of our district buildings during this holiday season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay. Moving on to finance. We have, we're going to have a course and credit approvals and motion to resume tax questions through the same vendor that we had before. Is that correct, Ms. Haynes?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none. Under personnel, retirements, leaves, appointments. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on any of those? Any public comments? Presentations by board members. Mr. Scott?
I have nothing to report.
B.C., Burke's Career in Tech, Ms. Thompson. I don't know if they're in that supply line or not. All right, do you know when the next time they meet is?
Sure.
It's this Thursday. Okay. Okay. Legislative report, I spoke to Mr. Strobel, and he said they had nothing to report, so that's very exciting. Any other reports from any of those committees, from any of the other board members? Not committees, I'm sorry. Any of those other outside boards?
We have a meeting for the
The Tax Commission?
Tax Collection Commission.
Okay.
The 16th of December.
Okay. Okay, any, any public comment on those? Hearing none. We have our enrollment statistics. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on enrollment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Moving on to curriculum and instruction, Ms. Aubrey.
I was not able to attend the last meeting.
Oh, forgot.
I have some notes.
Okay. She took some notes.
Yeah. Thanks.
So, we reviewed the integrated training. It looks like by January, we should have about 50% agreement for that. There was a presentation on instructional coaching. The data has been taken in progress over the last six weeks, and it shows that coaching is helping other teachers grow. The SABVAS has been, they've been giving great feedback on that. They're doing an eight-synchronous training, which will give more availability for trainings, and they will have somebody coming in to do more training in person. There was an update on MCSS, and that they're meeting once a week to kind of go through that. The pre-apprentice program, they work, their goal is 40 internships. They have surpassed 40 internships at this point. So that's fantastic.
Yeah.
And then, just with the curriculum, they will be working on personnel system this spring. I forgot anything. It is a very long curriculum instruction. There's a lot of information.
Anything else, Mr. McKnight? Are we good?
No, it's excellent.
Awesome. Okay, next meeting is the 24th. Any, any questions for Ms. Leonie or Mr. McKnight from the board? Any public comment? Moving on to extracurricular, Mr. Miller is not here, and Ms. Bell took some notes?
Yes.
Random meeting.
So the meeting was tonight, and we talked about basketball season beginning, the game starting on Friday evening. All are away. We previously talked about approving overnight visits for the wrestling tournaments. Approved that. And then, we had some exciting news that our unified program, which shows them to take two ambassadors with the PA contingent for the USA Games, and this is made for by the Special Olympics. It is a great honor. It will be a publicity wide world sport, and our program has recently been put in place so to be chosen so quickly out of the gate. So it's a lot for the amount of effort we've put into the program. So the dates of that will be June 5th to 12th, 2022.
Yeah, congratulations to everyone involved. Our next extracurricular committee meeting, as I said, we will not meet before the committee of the whole in January, so that next meeting will be February 7th. Any questions for Ms. Bell on extracurricular? Any public comment? Facilities and transportation committee was today, and as Mr. Strobel wasn't here, I took some notes. Mr. Brian Cabala introduced himself. He was, he's our new director of facilities and contracted, contracted services. Gave a little bit of his CV. He comes to us from an education facilities background. He was the director of facilities for the Chester County IU, and we're glad to have him. So he's spending a lot of his time acquainting himself with the, with our perfect buildings that don't have any problems. And so, so he, he started off with our heating issues. He believes that there is a good chance that we will need to be replacing our circulator pump at the high school. He is looking to get, get some bids on what that would cost versus rehabilitating what we've got. He says that the annex gym heat is a significant issue. Might also need to get bits for replacing on that. The middle school PC heating system, he believes that repairs should be sufficient by our contractors, and at the moment, he doesn't think there's any need for new equipment for safety. He, you know, we have a lot of our different equipment and systems in all the buildings are insured by different entities. He is going to be, over the next month or so, touring all the buildings with all of our different insurance companies to receive recommendations on all, all sorts of different systems, including our alarms, fire alarms especially, kitchens, bleachers, elevators, preventative maintenance, preventative maintenance recommendations. He's going to also be reviewing all of our annual certification requirements and our preventative maintenance contracts. He also gave us a short update on the library in the high school. When we last left our heroes, we had a significant flood in the library at the high school because we had a system failure in some equipment that was on the roof above the library. And our first insurance adjuster has gone through. We also, we approved, and we approved a bunch of remediation to prevent mold from building up in all those areas. We had a second run-through where the board approved more money to do other remediations that was recommended by our insurance adjuster. But now, our insurance adjuster is recommending we get a third quote for, from Restore Corps, and they'll be coming in next week to see what further, what further damage might be, need to be fixed and what can be covered by our insurance. Also, he's bringing in the, the company that maintains the equipment that failed to see if maybe we can do a bit of redesign that would make it significantly less instead of just moderately less likely to occur more, which would be good. That was it? Is that correct? Okay. Our next facilities committee meeting will be February 7th. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board about all what I just said? Have any comments from the public? Moving on to finance, normally chaired by Mr. Miller. I'm hoping that Ms. Haynes could give us a quick rundown of what we discussed.
Yes, at our last finance committee meeting, we had our auditor, Bailey, our new auditor Chris Herp, came in and went over the final audit of everybody, and that has been approved. We also had a update of a new vision plan in our account for all employees that will start our hiring to start January 1st for everybody. And just have a reminder from one of the finance committee meetings that I will be sending out an RFP to get together for this or July 5th. We're going to do it, and we haven't done that since the '80s or '90s, and I think it's real important to go through and get a good basis of where we stand with the salary of building and everything that we're going to do. I'll be putting it in the budget for next year. That's the basis is between $15,000 and $20,000. I would have it at 20,000 because they're maybe finally coming up. That's all. Our next meeting will be the budget committee meeting, workshop meeting, January 6th, Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, that is not on the agenda. I did want to also remind everybody of that. So that is Wednesday, the 6th, 6 o'clock here.
Thursday. Thursday.
What did I say, Wednesday?
Yeah.
It is Thursday. And I will remind everybody that it'll be a public meeting. It's, especially if you're, if you're relatively new or if you don't sit on the finance committee. It's, I know we don't do very many meetings on days that we don't meet, on the second and fourth Monday. We don't do very many meetings beyond that, and I know sometimes it's hard for some people to show up, but it's a good idea to be at that work, budget workshop meeting to know how much or little of our budget is flexible, and how much is required to be there for different legislative regions. So I did want to invite everybody who can make it to come. And then our regular meeting is the 24th of January. Any comments, questions, concerns for Ms. Haynes from the board? Any public comment on finance? Okay, moving on to policy review. That's Mr. Scott.
Yes, we had a quick meeting this evening discussing six policies, first reading of the policies, including public relation objectives, citizen advisory committees, public complaint procedures, relations with parents and guardians, community engagement in use of school facilities. They were all first readings. Our next meeting will be on February 7th.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Scott on policy from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, technology committee. That's also Mr. Strobel, and I am not prepared to talk about what we talked about last time. Did you have notes?
I do not. I do not see Mr.
I'm sorry, I'm the worst.
Yeah.
Give me one second, I'll pull it up. Okay. He gave us our infrastructure planning update for '22, '23, explaining the money that was in his budget for the year. We've moved toward, I know we've moved toward having, because of the fact that we've moved away from wired, wired units for the students to wireless, our infrastructure planning needs a lot more money spent on Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi access in the buildings, like dealing with dead zones for Wi-Fi, some of the, some of the classrooms have had dead zones in them, and so we're spending more money on Wi-Fi and less on wired. There's a lot of wired systems in the rooms that aren't really necessary because nobody but the teacher has a wired unit. So if I'm not mistaken, his budget so far was flat? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so his budget so far has been flat since year over year. We are also needing to purchase some generators for all buildings to create some redundancy for our uninterruptible, because right now we have uninterruptible power sources that cover our units in the, in the buildings so we can continue to have internet if there is a slight glitch in power. But right now, we only have that at two buildings. I want to say the high school and one of, and the intermediate center. And who wants it at all four? Right?
Yes.
Does that sound right? And, okay, I don't remember what we discussed under end user devices.
The end user devices? No, I, I, if I can recall, I think we are updated with our end user devices as far as what is scheduled to be replenished or replaced.
Right.
Is what he discussed.
Yeah, because we will, right, our first contract with, our first contract with Apple will be ceasing at the end of that year, at the end of this year.
I don't.
Yeah, I believe that's the case.
Yeah.
And, and so our next four-year contract will start.
I believe.
Yes. And he explained to us that we had originally discussed the possibility of being able to sell those units back to the students, but that would create a sales tax issue for us.
Yes.
That we currently don't sell things and then, you know, receive sales tax for anything, so it would create like a whole other problem of reporting sales tax as a nonprofit. And so it, it, we decided it was easier to not do that, but he, that, that decision was made a year ago, but we had to talk about it again. So, all right. There were, and there were no project updates for anything else. Oh, and student information systems, that's just moving, that's, that was just, he told us that's just trucking along.
Yes.
Yeah.
He just gave an update.
Gave an update, getting our, getting student, student info. All of our new students in kindergarten are in the, are in the new electronic system completely, but it's the students that have been here for a while. We're kind of backfilling those kids into the, into the new electronic system. And that was it. And I'm sorry that that was so disjointed. Hopefully, Mr. Strobel will add to that next time he's here, if you need to hear it. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns that I can just barely answer from the board? Any, any public comment? All right, I had to pull up that meeting, and I have to pull up the new meeting, committee of the whole. There we go. All right. Okay, so under old business, there's currently just the, the minutes are there, but Ms. Leonie had wanted us to discuss masking and medical exemptions. I'll, I'll let you take the floor.
So I guess, you know, I've seen the Twin Valley, and my concern
Oh, I apologize.
So, when reading the, from the Department of Health, the mask mandate order, right, that we're not going to go into it, not being constitutional this time, I want to actually look at the fact that it says under section three, if wearing face covering will either cause a medical condition or exacerbate an existing one, including respiratory issues and impaired breathing, in mental health condition or a disability. It's pretty broad, but then when you go over to section four, it actually says, provide reasonable accommodations for individuals who state they have, state they have a medical condition. It does not say a doctor has to. So I'm going to use some examples here. I know there are children that have a DSM diagnosis, but they don't actually have that through a doctor. Their doctor doesn't have anything to do with their, their condition. I know people that have gotten their diagnosis through the BCIU. The BCIU is not going to write them a letter. So there are situations where children aren't going to be able to get that from a doctor. Their doctor doesn't give them medication, they don't do anything, they're not going to write that note. I know there's tons of doctors out there that are refusing to write those notes, and right now, worse having children suffer through that. You know, I know kids that have come home crying because they can't concentrate, so now we're affecting their education because they can't concentrate with that mask on it. They're zinging across the room, you know? There are certain situations, and so I would rather have a form like Twin Valley has where the parents can make that choice. We aren't seeing a substantial amount of kids, we see them getting COVID, but they're not, we're not seeing kids dying from COVID. I mean, I just looked at the numbers this morning. It's, it's not affecting kids the same way it is affecting adults. And so right now, I think for the best of our students, there's been tons of studies coming out that the distancing and the masking is actually harming our children more than it is helping them at this point. So I am asking the board to reconsider our exemption letters and how it look more like Twin Valley.
So let me just say, I did give this document to Mr. Jared. Everyone else who's on the board, I sent you a photo of the Twin Valley form, the way it reads right now. And they do have a statement there that says, I understand, for the parent to sign off, that if, I understand that if local, state, or federal regulations require documentation from medical professional, from a medical professional to justify an exemption, the school district will contact me for supporting information. Right now, the recommendation, recommendation that we are receiving from our, from, from our administration and from our attorney is that we should be asking for that documentation upfront and not after the fact. That is, that is the recommendation that it, that we are receiving as a board. It doesn't mean we have to follow it, but I'm just saying that's what their recommendation is. If we did something different If we did something different, correct me if I'm wrong, we would be doing so without the endorsement of that, of a change.
Other than Twin Valley, other than other surrounding school districts have a similar...
Hamburg has one that's less restrictive even than what I just said. And then, but as far as I know...
Hotsgrove just went from under to...
Hotsgrove. Hotsgrove. So...
And there are numerous smaller private schools that have no masks at home. And they have not shut down, they have not had substantial spread. They are doing quarantine in the way that quarantine is supposed to go. And it's actually working out.
I think Hamburg's just closed.
Hamburg just closed, yeah.
I wasn't talking about...
Yeah, no, she's talking about the private schools, but yes, yes.
Talking about other schools that have not had masks in two years.
The...
What is the size of a private school? The classroom size, how many kids are in it?
Well, those children are sitting inches apart. So it's not going to matter what the classroom size is if they're actually in there. And I know some of those students have never quarantined.
I would keep my kids in school. That's the, don't move on the regular. Like, if that means they have to wear a mask, they have to wear it. Like, that's just my personal feeling. And I'd rather that than the school shutdown.
What were you going to say, Ms. Bell?
My concern is that we changed the health and safety policy last month. And unless we re-novated it again, that we changed our quarantine requirements that if you're wearing a mask...
Thank God, because it happened that next day.
Right, that you did not have to quarantine. If you're exposed, if you're properly not wearing your mask. So I just want people to be aware that you would elect to not wear a mask or have parents not wear a mask, then you could be, you would then be, they would have to quarantine your child.
Even if your child was wearing a mask?
Do the parents understand that?
No, if your kid's wearing a mask and another kid who has COVID is not wearing a mask in the building, then your kid's going to have, if they spend time, then, yeah. I believe that's the case, correct, Mr. Hurley?
In the way that it was written.
Yeah, if a kid is without a mask, who is COVID positive, is in the room with your kid that is masked, has a mask on, then your kid's going to be, it's going to be, like unless they were six feet apart, you know. I'm just saying that that's the way, that's the way it would be.
My kids have all been quarantined this year. And it's happened to me three times this year. And it's just, it's an inconvenience to every parent that happens here.
I understand that, you know, we're saying that there are other schools that do it, that do this with, in a less restrictive way, not asking for a doctor's note upfront, you know. But, I mean, we're talking about less than 20% of schools in Berks County. It's like two, two out of 17, if you don't include the private schools in Berks County and one in the next county over. I mean, I'm not saying that they're the only ones. I'm just saying that, you know, I don't feel like we're an outlier in asking for medical, a medical exemption.
Were masks optional right at the beginning?
It was like half and half.
Okay.
You know, and, but, and then, like, we met early. And then, as we got closer to the beginning of school, it ended up that we were like, there were six, six of us that were still mask optional. And, you know, and then the governor's requirements came out. And then, you know, we were, we were one of, I think, six schools that had that first week of school with no masking, you know.
So not getting into a conversation about the constitutionality of the original order, right? How many, how many, how many students? Are we requiring the documentation upfront? Is that what I'm hearing? Right? So how many, how many students have been able to comply with that? Because it's been my experience that a lot of healthcare systems will not write exemptions.
If it's, so without getting into too much detail, are we talking like 20 kids? Are we talking 50 kids?
I'd say closer to 20 in the district that have that.
So 20 in the district.
So, so, so 20% out of 100? I mean, you know, 20 out of 100?
No, 20, 20 students.
20 students.
Out of, out of 3,000.
Right, actually providing documentation. So it seems to me that it's more restrictive for you to insist on having documentation.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't see the point in having, I mean, I think mask optional parent choices.
Okay.
Where we should go.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, I understand your point of view. I just, I just don't agree with it. It's, but that doesn't mean, because, and this is, this is my, this is my rationale for saying that, is because if you had, I, in this, if you have a student that is ill and is home, once you've been home for three days, you're required to submit a doctor's note to let us know that that kid should still be home, right? If you have, if you have a medical condition that's going to last, like, it's going to last more than three days, you know, you should be able to, be able to give us some reason why.
And I understand where you're coming from with that, but the point is that the doctors aren't writing the documentation.
And I'm not a doctor and I can't fix that. I can't fix that.
Well, I'm not either, but you're asking for something that the medical media...
But some people do. Some people are able to get it.
It's a smaller percentage.
And that's, but, but we're talking about protecting the greatest number of students at the school.
But they don't, but they're not having an opportunity to get the documentation.
Oh, that's not necessarily true.
Well, if, if the health system...
If you're treating for a condition and you're, if you are actually treated for a condition and you go to your doctor and your doctor actually agrees that you have this...
I'm telling you that the doctors do not provide because the healthcare systems do not want them to give exemptions. Truth.
No liability, they don't want liability.
That means it is a liability.
So why can't it be the parents' liability?
And here's my thing, because I don't want to see my, my child quarantined because you chose for your child not to wear a mask.
But see, then, that comes to me. Hold on. That comes to my point then, because I totally misunderstood everything. I'm fine with it being mask optional, but then I want to change the health and safety plan because my kid's not staying home. I'm not going to play that game because they were within...
Right, I think you should change the health and safety.
Well, we, and... It's going to be a twofold thing because I'm not having that. We knew, well, we know that the masks are going to be going away. We don't know what the date is, but it's going to happen.
This is going to be on January 14?
17.
17, but the, so the... They're pushing it back.
They push it back every month.
So, so there is going to be, what we had said, what I had said that when we had voted to change the, fix the immediate problem of the... Which is what I wanted fixed. And it worked in my benefit because that Monday, it happened. And not just you, it worked for, it helped for a lot of parents. It worked for a lot of people. Yes. But, but my, my thought at that time was that since there was going to be a change that was going to be coming down from the state, that we didn't want to adjudicate too many changes to what's going to happen under masks, masks gone because we might have to change it all around depending on whatever recommendations come down from the state. You know, because I didn't know if they, if they were going to recommend something that was going to be completely different than what we were...
I thought it was supposed to be done on the floor. The state plan, where it is a following state mandate thing.
They were supposed to be done on the floor. But then, there was a, there was a stay where the, the state Supreme Court or the appellate court? The Supreme Court said that they had to wait to hear the arguments.
But it's not each, under the, on the eighth? Had the autonomy to create their own health and safety plan, right? So you can change your health and safety.
Correct.
Irregardless. So, so Mrs. Albrecht?
Well, not completely irregardless. We can change it, but there were issues with the mandate that if we didn't follow the mandate, there were repercussions to board members, to districts, to schools if we didn't follow the mandate.
But now it could go the other way? If you find it unconstitutional and we're mandating masks on children, and I said this a couple of months ago, that it could go the other way and schools should still have a decision?
Yeah, but then we have our legal protection and we're under our protection of our policy. I understand insurance, that's what I do. So then we're under the protection of our policy. Errors and missions, we have our sovereign immunity. If we go against that, we lose the...
If we did something unconstitutional on the issue?
If we did something unconstitutional.
Right, if this was found unconstitutional and we were sitting here mandating masks, that it could come back and suit the district, yes.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
I'm just saying they can do it.
But if we were following a mandate, then we would be covered. We would be protected if we're following a mandate.
But again, it's probably not constitutional.
Like if it was constitutional, like unconstitutional from the beginning, like this...
But your policy would still cover you because it was a mandate.
Right, but it's a mandate, not a law.
Right, but your policy would still cover you.
But, right, but you can change, you have the autonomy to do this.
You can.
Okay.
You can.
All right, so we're not doing a real vote right now because this is not a voting meeting. Show hands, who would be interested in changing our medical exemption policy? Who would be interested in keeping it the way it is?
Since we're missing a board member?
I understand, we can, we can have this conversation again.
No, I just, I want to...
Absolutely, and we can have that conversation again. But I'm just letting you know that for right now, I don't think it would be beneficial to put it on as an actual, we're going to vote on changing the health and safety plan next meeting, but we can put it on the agenda under old business to discuss again with all, with all nine of us. Is that fair?
Not fair.
How, by coming to the next meeting anyway?
What's that?
Things could be decided for us.
And it could be, for sure. Yeah, but he's, he's not, he's not wrong. There could be more information could come to us that could make a difference one way or another, from, from either the state or the county.
This week, they're supposed to be having, is it this week?
Agreed.
Wednesday, they're hearing the...
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday, they're hearing arguments. That doesn't mean they'll make a decision.
Right, I know we'll make a decision, but at least...
So we'll leave it under, we'll leave the discussion under old business for next meeting. Okay?
Fair.
Fair? All right. After hearing that, public comment on old business.
Yeah. Please, ladies first, please, ladies first.
My name is Melanie Hipser. My, my concern is, is, you know, how much are you taking into consideration? Have you done a survey from the parents on how they feel? Do you know, I mean, you're talking about 20 kids who have exemption letters, which is .006, okay? That is not having access. We do not know about a letter. We do not know how to get our kids exempt. My kid personally has a problem with things on his face. He has sensitivity issues. It is not something diagnosed as a medical condition. But do we take into consideration that my child is being harassed by kids who are wearing masks and the sensitivity issues that he's feeling because of that? Because he has to wear a shield, because he cannot have anything touching his face? Now, these are kids that are being harassed by people who are wearing masks and other issues that they have. So I really have concern about what kind of benefit you're doing for those kids, okay? So I think we really need to take consideration of how the parents feel as well. And why aren't we doing a survey on what the, what the parents think? I mean, we are following what everyone else does. But that's not necessarily the right thing. Just because you're a sheep in the herd, doing, going the same way doesn't mean you're going in the right direction. It really doesn't. So my feeling is, is that you really need to take some, you need to get some more factual information from the students that you serve, from the parents that you serve, and that's what the school board is here for. The school board is here to provide services and education for our children, not to, you know, put them into a area where they're doing everything what everyone else is doing, okay? You, as, as a school board, I think you are all responsible for that. And listen, I want my kids to be in school just as much as everyone else. I do. And I don't want them to be quarantined, you know. I understand your health and safety concerns, and I really do. Like, I, I get it, I'm a single mom. I work from home, or I don't work from home. I have to, you know, when my kids have to go and stay home, it is a huge inconvenience for me. I don't want that to happen. But I also don't want my child to suffer, and he is suffering. Last year was awful for him. This year has been tough for him too, okay? Him having to wear these masks, going on the transportation, everything else. He is being bullied by people that do wear masks. And no one brings up those, those tensions to those children, okay? They just think we're just totally anti-maskers and that's all we care about. That's not all we care about. We care about our children and receiving an education. And that is what we pay our taxes for, and that is why we're here. So you need to all take that into consideration. It's not just about your children, it's about children as a whole. Come up with different ideas. If you need to put, you know, for, just like they do on the school buses and they track everybody, if you need to put half of the maskers on one side of the classroom and half of the unmaskers on the other side of the classroom, I don't care, you know. You can keep track of them that way. But there are a lot of parents that feel the same way I do, and they're being, being affected. And it is concerning. So I think we all should take that into consideration.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point, thank you very much for your comments. I just wanted to point out, it's still a small number, but it is, it's .6% of our kids have, have a, have an exemption. I know it's still less than 1%, but I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
I thought some have 5, so.
Yeah.
Does that include, does the 20 include the 5 of 4?
I don't know.
I don't, we don't know that.
I don't know, we don't have, I mean, we can't...
20 including the 5 of 4 claims?
Oh, it's about 20, I would say total, and that's what I'm...
And that's total, okay. I apologize.
Can I be boss, say hi? I did. My name is Jay, I'm a PAW, so... I noticed you all got sworn in today, this morning, or this evening. Calling all you guys, one, two, three, one. Only one swore on the Bible. But I know that you guys swore to uphold the Constitution. That's what you swore, to uphold the Constitution. And this mask thing is unconstitutional. That's why it's in the court, it's unconstitutional. So you guys swore to uphold the Constitution, and you're not doing it, but you swore to it. My one mask is optional. I think that what happens on the 17th of January, that's what they're saying, is, I mean, we have to push the goalpost that long. Then what happens then? There's no more masks. Then where does all this big word back and forth go? Without optional masks, it's going to be optional, no choice. You guys are going back and forth about my kids wearing masks, this, that, the other. I want my kids staying home and this, that, the other. And I'm also going to change, but there's going to be no masks. So therefore, you have to redo your health and safety plan. So I think you should redo your health and safety plan going forward based on not wearing masks. So you guys go in the politics to be elected, to be leaders, okay? And we do people, good for you people that are on the board right now to be a leader, not a follower. Don't listen to this stupid guy. I think this guy's crooked, that's just my personal opinion, I'm not going to have him. He works for the Roth Childs. He also, he works for the Roth Childs, and he also goes other school districts. Why is he not here? Because he's got other things on his mind. I wouldn't trust this lawyer at all. Get rid of him, or we're going to get a second opinion on it. Because what you guys are doing are not upholding the Constitution. That's why it's in the Supreme Court right now, and he's unconstitutional. Nobody knows that. But nobody seems to want to uphold the Constitution here. It should be optional for parents, make it parents' choice. You guys are going to write the rules on what it is, follow the rules. You can make it as convenient as you want it, if you want. You make the rules, you do it. Be the leadership, set the bar for that school. You can say, hey, you don't want to do quarantine stuff? Because this stuff, these PCR tests are bogus. And I'm understanding that it's going away this April, this March, okay? That what happens, what's coming out now? Let's say it's the flu, but they keep coming on and on. All these other variants and stuff like that. like that, this, that, and this, that, and the other, well, let's just say this was the flu, and they had to make masks on them, would, would this, would this be changed? That's what I'm gonna say, would it change people's minds? Take COVID out of it, say it's the flu, and you have to wear masks, because the CDC says it, or is that what we're going by, the flu we all had before people got sick? Kids got sick before, and kids aren't dying from COVID, just like the flu, if people die from the flu, they die. Did you guys all say? No, but you're so going to say-
It was Taliban turn.
Oh, okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's not go there.
I was joking. I was joking.
Okay, um, my name is Dower, I'm in Amity Township, um, I wanna go ahead and acknowledge that I understand everybody's concern, because I think as parents, we know what's best for our kids, and as parents, we want the best in health and safety for our children, so I'm actually, I'm all for every parent to be concerned for their, the health of their children, so I absolutely respect everyone's, uh, opinion, I just wanna make sure that's clear. What I'm actually up here for is, is the legal direction that this board has received has been, to my husband's case in point, unconstitutional, in that, this, this school board, which I've been doing a lot of research, by the way, it's very interesting, the school board is sovereign in amongst itself, and the school board can dictate what the policies are and are not with or without a pandemic, and so, in the actual mandate, the acting secretary says exemptions, exceptions, the school is asking for exemptions, so technically, the school is not following the mandate, the mandate does not require medical paperwork, the mandate allows for exceptions, if you go into a court of law, exception and exemptions mean two separate things, which is why I'm highly concerned about the legal direction and advice that the school is actually receiving. Now, I am not saying I'm a medical professional, I'm not saying I'm a legal professional, I'm a parent that's actually holding everyone on this board accountable, because we wanna make sure that we're gonna be sovereign in amongst ourselves, here at Daniel Boom, we have to make sure we're also following what is under the PA Constitution, and so, my, my point is, is, yes, kids are going to get sick, but to assume unhealthy and proven healthy is like saying, I'm gonna assume you're guilty until proven innocent, no, you're innocent until proven guilty, this is the psychological warfare and the manipulation of language that's happening right now on our land, and I really wanna make sure that if we're gonna be rule followers, and if we're going to say we're following a mandate, then let's follow the mandate, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Markel Burgrau. Just like to bring up one point, um, when it was ruled that the mandate was unconstitutional, uh, of course, we had to wait a couple weeks until the masks were lifted off our children's faces during the day, and then, of course, when they put a stay on it, we, they don't have to wait until the other way around, so basically, what's happening over and over again, and it will be happening for years, is no matter what happens, they'll change the rules, they'll change the goalposts, and leave masks on our kids, damage our kids another month, another school season, another year, this will go on forever until schools say no, until parents say no, until the school boards say no. We've all come up here multiple times, telling you how damaging this is to our children and to everybody in general, the masks do not stop it, at all, COVID, at all, they never have, COVID is very, very small, we had multiple people come up here and tell you this, using real data, but it does do damage of them to the education of the children, children not seeing the teacher's face, not seeing their friend's face when they communicate, communication is broken, uh, much of communication is verbal cues, facial cues, it damages psychologically. And my, my kids have not worn masks outside of school since last May, I didn't want to make my kids wear masks anywhere, because they were not effective, they, it was always a dumb thing to do, I could see in a clinical situation, you wear masks, but doctors don't wear masks when they go into patient rooms, they wear masks in certain situations, in surgery, when they go into immunocompromised rooms, they don't wear it in every single room, nurses don't wear masks in every single room, I worked at a hospital, I know this, and every once in a while, we'd have to go into a patient room, and they were immunocompromised, they'd wear a whole muddy suit and everything, but not the next room over, because masks are not used for that, they do not, all they do is keep germs in the mask, so all we're doing is, for another week, another month, another year, damaging the kids, and the people in power don't care, they'll continue to damage the kids, they're, they're expendable, because everybody in power, that's the way they feel, they don't care how much these kids are damaged, and it's damage, suicide is up drastically.
Thank you.
So, I have a second.
Thank you.
Rachel Markle, Cross Street, Burgrau. Thank you, thank you for listening, thank you for having us on, on the, the agenda tonight and listening to us, um, we really appreciate it, um, just please take into, into heart what we're saying, and just because you think that it is best for our kids, that you think that we, our kids should wear masks, we're the parents, and that's what, that's what we know is best for our kids, and you know what, how many kids, how many parents think that they, their kids had this already, like, even before COVID came out, my kids were sick as a dog in, in January 2020, so how do you know, they already have immunity, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Can I just say one thing?
I guess.
I'm gonna get in trouble here.
No, go ahead.
But I, I just wanted to say, I mean, and I say this absolutely, it's, we, we all, I mean, there's a bunch of us have kids here, I have three kids still here in the school district, I know, I don't wanna repeat myself, but we did vote for that, we did vote for the vote, vote for the mask optional position before the mandate came out, believe me, I, I get it, I, my kids, you know, they're, you know, they, on Monday morning, they were like, what, this morning, I guess, Dad, we have to do the mask again, and it's, you know, it's, you know, we're living it too.
You have the power to change it, you have the power to power, you have the power, the power is in your-
Anyway, I just, I just wanna say, yes, and, anyway, I appreciate everyone's opinion, but, and I'm not saying we won't, like, I, but I, thank you for your opinion tonight, but I just want you to know that we're, we're, we're parents too here, not everyone here has kids, but most of us do in this district, so it, it does affect us, and, so, I just want, you've been heard, and thank you very much, and I appreciate, thank you for talking to us.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, um, just have, like, two more things, um, under new business, um, we have a, um, an item to accept a new hot dog roller, it's on the list, um, valued at $222.93 from Tom and Wendy Sweet, um, for- For the F, um, um, who are the advisors for the future, future, uh, Business Leaders of America to be used in fundraising, they, they do, um, and also for their own events that they want to be doing, um, but they are the, um, largest group of volunteers for working in the concession stand for our basketball games, um, and, uh, that, that's what funds, now, they haven't been traveling much the last couple of years, but that's what funds most of their, their dues and their, their travel plans, uh, we, we have a very robust FBLA chapter here that does very well at the states and sometimes nationals, so, um, they will be able to earn a little bit money, um, with that donation, and, um, I know, we will be voting for that next meeting, but, um, I do appreciate Tom and Wendy Sweet do a lot for our district. Um, do I have any public comment on new business? Okay, so, any presentations by the public on anything we discussed tonight or anything else? Yeah, yeah. If, I'm making an exception, because it's just you that spoke of it, was everybody? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
That's okay, um, I actually just wanted to make a, a mention, um, my daughter is among the very few population in our district with an exemption.
Okay.
Um, our, my daughter, Adele, has asthma, she was actually diagnosed with it and hospitalized in 2019, um, her pediatrician specifically said that unanimously, their office decided not to do any exemptions, no matter what the ailment is, because they don't want the legal ramifications to fall on them if in the event something has happened, so, case in point to a conversation you guys were having-
Right.
Doctors' offices are not giving them, giving them out, um, the matter, even if they receive OPD, even if they were handicapped, even if, and this is what her pediatrician explains to me, that I have to go and get the exemption from her specialist, well, I go to the specialist, and the specialist says, I don't wanna lose my license, it's gonna get reported to the state, I don't wanna lose my license, the form is asking for a license, and so she is fearful, now, my other daughter's doctor, she can't have anything on her face, um, it's actually, it's pretty gross, but she can't, anything touch her face, so she said she cannot have a mask, she signed it, and she put her license number, she said, you know, it is what it is, this is her diagnosis, so every doctor is different, so to say across the board that doctors would do it is absolutely false, and you can have an opinion, and I, this is not an opinion, it's actually what the doctor told me, um, I think it's very important that we're not taking our own personal biases and making these decisions, and becoming non-biased, looking at the information and seeing what doctors are going through, yes, there are kids who have exemption, and maybe other doctor's office, I actually, I'm looking for another one, but other doctor's offices may give them out like candy, I don't know, but I know our doctor's office will not, because they just, they decided as a whole unanimous doctors that they would not do that, just so, I'm just, I'm just sharing that because of what was said, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm not trying to sway anybody in any direction, but know that that's what's happening.
Thank you, I appreciate it, everybody. Okay. And saying no more public comment? Um, we, I would like a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Second. And we adjourn, thank you, everybody.